And I'm sure there's even more watching at home. First of all, I'm here to do some of the admin business-y stuff, so I'm going to be the credit card disclaimer guy and talk really, really fast so we can get on to the good stuff. First of all, cell phones out, cell phones off. Okay? Candidates, we ask that you pocket your cell phones for the evening. Let's show some courtesy to your colleagues and the audience, and let's not be distracted by our devices and focus on the event for the evening. That said, for those of you on the tweety, the hashtag for tonight's event is #WeHoForum, W-E-H-O-F-O-R-U-M. A few thank yous. I'd like to thank the city and Helen Goss for allowing us to use the auditorium this evening and for validating the parking. And James, yes. For those of you who didn't hear my earlier announcement, Lauren in the back and James here has the validation tickets for your parking. Speaking of James, I want to say a special thank you to him and the Beverly Hills Greater Los Angeles Association of Realtors for supporting this event and providing the honorarium for the League of Women Voters. And representing the League of Women Voters tonight, we have four wonderful volunteers: Fran Lepides and Zita Rea, who are vetting the audience questions, and Barbara Ann Haas and Jeanne Thompson, who are going to be the time police this evening and keep everyone on schedule. Yes, a big thank you to them. Now, I'd like to introduce our neighborhood sponsors, and I'd like everybody here to, when we announce your neighborhood, to stand up so that the candidates can kind of get a feel for everybody that's here and what neighborhood you represent. So, starting alphabetically with Tri-West, which is the Melrose to Santa Monica between La Cienega and San Vicente. Then we have Wehona, the Center City. Keep standing, keep standing. The WeHo neighbors that are Crescent Heights and Santa Monica. The West Hollywood West Residents Association, which is La Cienega to San Vicente, Melrose to Beverly. And the West Hollywood Heights Neighborhood Association, which is north of Sunset. West Hollywood East, Fairfax to La Brea. And West Hollywood North Neighborhood Association, which is La Cienega to San Vicente, Sunset to Santa Monica. It's me standing up. And West Hollywood South Neighborhood Association, La Cienega to Sweets or Melrose to Rosewood. Thank you very much for all the hard work that the organizations did to put together this evening. As you know, we're watching live on Channel 10, if you get cable TV. You can also stream live on WeHo.org/tv. This event will be rebroadcast a number of times. You can go to that website to find out, but it will be rebroadcast six times between now and March 1st. And with that, I'd like to introduce our gracious moderator. Oops, one more piece of business. Candidates, you have been given a pad of paper and a pen. We have a very limited timeframe. We have the time police. We ask that when Michael announces the question, that you write it down so that you do not need to ask him to repeat the question and take up important time. And with that, I'd like to introduce our wonderful moderator. He did this two years ago for us. Michael Willens is a former resident of West Hollywood and a successful business owner and a wonderful moderator. And with that, have a great time, everyone.
Forgot to mention that I'm a professional pole dancer, by the way. Okay. Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to introduce the candidates. First, Nick Garzilli. Tristan Schucraft. Steve Martin. Sam Borelli.
I apologize, I spelled Mr. Borelli's name wrong.
Jeff Prang. Christopher Landavazo. John Duran. Tom DeMille. And Rusty Wiggs. Okay, candidates, all the questions have different response times, and again, do your best to stay within the time allotted. You also have the option to pass on a question if you choose to. Okay, the topic groups will cover a broad spectrum of topics from traffic to development, parks, safety, and the planning process. Okay, here's our first question, and this is for Nick Garzilli. If elected, what would be your first priority? And this is question one, and you have 30 seconds.
My first priority, and I got some great feedback from Abby Land's office at the end of last week, would be to have a solar pride festival in West Hollywood Park. And maybe you might not know, but I've been proposing to the city a PRT system, a solar personal rapid transit network, where we could put that up in the park and invite all these solar companies, and then that will kickstart things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tristan Schucraft.
Same question. I would like to see more community involvement. My background is in technology. I think that people shouldn't have to come to city council meetings to become involved. I think that people should have an app on their phone where they can see the issues at hand, the bullet points, be able to vote, and more importantly, see how each city council member votes. So there's real transparency and accountability. And that would be my number one and first priority, more community involvement.
Thank you. Steve Martin.
Well, thank you. I have a number of priorities. I think my first priority and my priority that will remain throughout any time I'm going to be on city council will be to reestablish civic engagement. We really need to bring this community together. We need to start creating consensus on the future of West Hollywood and figure out ways to preserve the wonderful culture we have here and the diversity we have here. We've got issues needing more law enforcement, parking, but development's our biggest issue, and I think we need to create a new consensus on that. Thank you.
Sam Borelli.
My first priority would to, sorry, thank you. My first priority would to bring back trust in our government, trust in the process, and trust in our leaders. Citywide, there has been a lack of trust over many things, like large development in our community, about a BB gun shooting in Plummer Park that nobody knew about, and it's time for our city to be more transparent and more open and sharing, and I will work diligently to bring back trust in our community.
Thank you. Jeff Prang.
Thank you very much. I actually have a number of issues that I think are a high priority for the next four years. One is to continue to protect our neighborhoods, protect historic preservation, and to protect against overdevelopment. Secondly, we need to invest in public safety. We put a million dollars into public safety in the current budget. That's insufficient. We need additional patrols on the east side and traffic enforcement. Thirdly, we need to expand our parkland. Laurel Park needs to be rehabilitated, and we need to invest in a new community-based plan for Plummer Park.
Great, thank you. Christopher Landavazo.
My first priority would actually be in my community plan, which is number one, civic engagement. And essentially, what it really comes down to is listening to our community first and making decisions second. And through the implementation of a technology called Nixle that would allow us to create what are called civic impact zones, we'd be able to effectively go out there and ping people's phones, ping their emails, so that the public notice goes further than just posting something at the sheriff's station or over at City Hall, and truly getting that dialogue started with everybody in our community. And I think that that right there is the key.
Thank you. John Duran.
Eighty-five percent of our people live in either apartments or condominiums, and we have a real problem with housing infrastructure that is aging. We've designated over 80 properties as historically significant in the city, but the reality is so many more of our multifamily housing projects are now 50, 60, 70 years old and in dire need of infrastructure repair, whether it's electrical, plumbing, roofing, and we have tenants primarily in rent-controlled units in each of these buildings that have to be protected at the same time. So I think the aging of our housing infrastructure would be a first priority.
Thank you. Tom DeMille.
Yes, you know, I'm a proud resident of Palm Avenue, and I've been there for 15 years and lived with aides for 15 years, and all the people that live in my building signed my nomination papers. And so I know the first thing that I have to do, and that is continue what Sal Gariello did, and I would name Donna Sauer as my deputy on day one. I would want to hit the ground running on senior issues and women's issues. We need things for pregnant mothers and children that are crossing our streets that are deadly, that were deadly two nights ago.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Rusty Wiggs.
Hello, one of my first priorities would be development. I think we need to look in and see if we have the appropriate infrastructure for all the new development that is happening. I think we need to look into including parks and community spaces into these new developments that are going to happen. And I need to, we need to promote ourselves on knowing what we're asking for with these new developments. I live in West Hollywood West, and we have a .5 overlay zone, which means you can only build so far on your property. I think these are good things to look at to include on a development that we're going to build.
Thank you. Okay, question two, you have one minute. Gridlocked traffic and insufficient residential and commercial parking continue to be the biggest issues affecting quality of life and local business in West Hollywood. While commuter traffic may be outside our control, how would you address these issues with the various decisions you would be asked to make? Please be specific. Sorry. Tristan Schucraft.
Yeah, traffic and parking, right? That's the question? Sorry. All right, apologies. So I think there's two issues you asked about there, that's parking and traffic. I think that parking structures are great, but there's a lot of opportunities within our city to increase parking availability, like on Olive or on Larrabee. They're wide streets. We can introduce angled parking. Other streets, we can paint slot lines, so we can increase the availability there, so people take advantage of the most space. And as far as traffic, I see opportunities for increasing the length of turning lanes. I think there's opportunity for eliminating merging lanes to increase traffic flow. But there's, as you said, there's certain traffic that comes from the city, from people going east to west. But if we look at some of the alternatives, such as increasing the merging, the length of merging lanes, maybe eliminating left-hand turns, we can do a lot without building new infrastructure.
Thank you.
Is it 15, 30 seconds, or?
You had one minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was rushing through that one.
Steve Martin.
Well, I think the first thing we need to do is to do no harm. In the last two years, we've seen a lot of irresponsible development that the two incumbents who are up for reelection have voted for. The Kasdan Project at Movie Town Plaza, our own staff said that was going to create gridlock on Santa Monica Boulevard and push traffic onto residential streets. The city council recently removed 320 parking spaces from the proposed Sunset-specific, I'm sorry, from the Sunset Millennium Project that was going to be built. And more importantly, the Marriott Hotel at Sunset and Doherty was approved with 100 less parking spaces than were legally required, and that those 100 spaces our staff said should be built. The developers said not that they didn't want to build them, so the city council didn't. And I think that had a lot to do with the fact that Steve Afriat was the lobbyist for the hotel, who also happens to be the consultant for Jeff Prang and John Duran. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Borelli.
Transportation and parking is a huge issue in our city. We all have challenges, and in fact, as most of you know, I walk everywhere to avoid traffic in our city. But our city and our city leaders and our council members have had an overreliance on building more parking structures to create more parking and have allowed opportunities to inspire people to leave their cars at home with a cycle share program, where you could rent a bike on the east side of town and ride it all around West Hollywood and deliver it back on the west side of town, or a nightlife shuttle, which has been bogged down in bureaucracy and slow process at City Hall, where if you lived on the west side, east side of West Hollywood and wanted to come to the Cafe de Troyes and enjoy a meal and a glass of wine, you could get on this nightlife shuttle with fun and flair that West Hollywood is known for, and pay $2 and pick it up, come into the town, enjoy your meal, stop at Yogurt Stop, you're supporting local businesses, and get on the shuttle and go back. But it's been bogged down in bureaucracy, and we can do better. As a city, we can do better.
Thank you. Jeff Prang.
These issues have been one of my highest priorities since I was elected to the city council, and I'm not sure that there's anybody who's done more to effect change on this issue than I have during my tenure. During the time I've been on the city council, we have built 1,700 public parking spaces, lots, parking structures, and other things to get cars off the street. We have come up with creative traffic calming measures, such as diagonal parking, traffic circles, to reduce the amount of traffic in residential neighborhoods, including adding more stop signs to make it inconvenient for commuters. We've added bike lanes, a bike master plan, all along Santa Monica Boulevard and San Vicente. We've invested significantly to protect our residential neighborhoods against traffic, gridlock, and parking, and I've led the way during my time on the council.
Thank you. Christopher Landavazo.
When it comes to traffic and to parking, I think what we need to do is take a strategic approach, and it's to look at everything as a whole. What we typically do is we will take bits and pieces of, you know, traffic and parking and the structures and signage and everything else, and we look at them piece by piece, as opposed to coming up with a collective plan. Number one, with our parking structures, I think we need to have more signage, so people actually know where to go park. We need to make it easier for businesses to have their employees also utilize these places so that they're not taking up parking on the street side, and using things such that we have, like the city shuttle, to actually integrate into that, to actually take people around, not necessarily coming up with new shuttles, but utilizing existing things that only give 200 people a ride a day and essentially make no revenue for the city. So I think that you can make it work for seniors, I think you can make it work for businesses, and I think if we take a collective approach to doing advanced signage that tell people where they can park, we're going to make traffic less. Also, I support things like Zipcar and also the bike share program.
Thank you. John Duran.
Thank you. Parking and traffic, as was already stated, West Hollywood is in essence a pass-through city, which means the majority of the traffic along our major thoroughfares are people moving from the Hollywood area onto the west side, UCLA, and other cities west of our city. One of the things that's constantly in conflict, people are saying, can we move traffic along a little more quickly? But there's a cost to that, and that's the issue of pedestrian safety. We also have to be just as equally concerned about people trying to get across very busy intersections, and people need to slow down. And so that's the balance between the two issues, is yes, everybody wants traffic to move more quickly, but everybody also wants pedestrians to feel safe as they're crossing Santa Monica Boulevard. They want bicyclists to feel safe as they're using our bike lanes. And it's interesting that Mr. Martin brought up the Sunset Millennium, but I'm glad that he did, because I voted against the Sunset Millennium. It's the largest development in the history of the city of West Hollywood that Mr. Martin championed and passed through. So I just want to remind people, that development was Steve Martin's development.
Thank you. Tom DeMille.
Well, you know, the last thing I want to do this evening is go negative. I just, I don't want to go negative, and I think it's a disservice to democracy itself when we go negative against each other. You know, with the gridlock and the traffic problems that we have, we need an oversight of all of our city. We need cameras on Santa Monica and Sunset. We need better lighting. It's antiquated lighting, it's 100 years old. We need LED lightings that's solar-powered, so when we have an earthquake, our boulevards will be bright at night for weeks. We need cameras on Sunset to have an overview of the Sunset Music Festival, Santa Monica to have an overview of the Halloween Festival and Gay Pride. We need to protect millions of people all over our city that come to our city to make sure that they're safe. And so this gridlock thing is a public safety issue, and I'll make it my top priority.
Thank you. Rusty Wiggs.
We need to be more on top of our transportation, and we have mobility experts that can help us along in these directions. I had the pleasure of hearing about Melrose and La Cienega and how to divert a traffic off of Melrose by making two left-hand lanes if you're going west on Melrose, two left-hand lanes on La Cienega to avert traffic to keep on going straight on Melrose. We have these experts around, they can give us the advice to use the infrastructure that we do have now, and they can give us the advice to build what we need for our future. But we actually have to do, look at that research and data and see what we can do with it and what we can accomplish at the time that we have. For me, I'm into dedicated bus lanes, help move bus traffic, public transportation along quicker, and I don't think that parking is going to get easier in the city. We are an urban city, it's only going to get tougher and harder.
Thank you. Nick Garzilli.
Well, if you hate traffic, I'm your candidate. I am proposing the WeHo PRT. So these will be car-sized pods that hang on rails, solar panels on top, power the pods. You get in, you press the button where you want to go, and you go there nonstop, 30 to 40 miles an hour above the traffic. I have a letter of intent to build the first network for 100 million plus. I think WeHo would be a great place. I have to disagree. Traffic is a local problem with a local solution. I say we use our WeHo sovereignty to the fullest, and we build this network, then spread like a spider web, and it will start to go down Santa Monica, Sunset. Before you know it, you'll be getting to the Beverly's, to Century City, Beverly Center, Santa Monica, and it can all be privately funded, and we want to pay for access to the rights away, just like cellphone companies. And that new revenue, and I've done some calculations, it could end up being as high as property taxes. So then we are left with the decision, do we increase the size of our government, increase social services, or do we cut taxes? I say we cut taxes.
Thank you. Before I go on to question three, I'd like to ask everyone to hold their applause till the end. All right, thank you. We don't, we don't have a lot of time. Question three, one minute. East Side Redevelopment Agency. The east side was designated as a blighted economic zone, and a redevelopment agency was created to help foster improvements. Governor Brown dismantled redevelopment agencies statewide, and all funds were turned over to the state. With the loss of these funds and tools, what is your vision of the east side, and if elected, how would you work to make that a reality? I'd like to start with Steve Martin.
Well, fortunately, I'm the only one up here who can actually say that I voted to create the West Hollywood East Side Redevelopment Agency, and I was a leader in that, and that has resulted in creating the Gateway Project, adding millions of dollars to our budget, and creating hundreds of affordable housing units. I think we've come a good, a long way with redevelopment, and we've built a good infrastructure. What we do need on the east side is increased law enforcement, increased assistance to small businesses, and a sense of inclusion. I think that the city just recently appointed an East Side Advisory Task Force, which I suppose is a step forward, but it's also a step backward, because not one small business on that was business person that lives on the east side, that has a business on the east side, was even represented, and not a single member of the Russian community was put onto that advisory board. And I think that really makes a mockery of diversity in West Hollywood.
Thank you. Sam Borelli.
I think that forming an east side task force is tantamount to admitting that the city has let the east side falter under their watch and under our council members' watch. And it saddens me when I go as a public safety commissioner and get out of my car and walk around and feel the difference on the east side versus the west side. We shouldn't even have an east side versus a west side. We are one city, and we need to pay attention to both sides of the city and both north and south sides of the city. There are some interesting and great developments that are going on in the east side, and my partner and I are actually looking at housing over there because we think there's some good opportunities where the east side will kind of regenerate. But our city has faltered in letting it go into, as you put it, a blighted community, and I will diligently work with members of the east side to make sure that they're not left behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Prang.
The east side and the former redevelopment agency is a West Hollywood success story. The east side is a place where we have invested significant amount of resources to ensure that the people who live on the east side of town have the same opportunities and benefits as those people who live on the west side. When I moved to West Hollywood in 1987, prostitution was rampant. People complained about drugs and sex in the size of their, of their, of their homes. However, we have invested in affordable housing on the east side. We have built the, built the gateway, which has invested enormous amount of resources to allow us to invest in housing and code enforcement and public safety. The city has invested significantly just in this past year in public safety that has helped stomp out a lot of the crime issues that we've had on the east side as well, and I think anybody who lives on the east side can tell you the success of that, of that program. We spend more money on the east side per capita than we do on the west side. It is, it's an area which needed a great deal more help. We've come to, we've answered to the call, and the east side will very soon, in the next decade, be comparable to west side as property values continue to increase and quality of life enhances.
Thank you. Christopher Landavazo.
When it comes to the east side, one of the things that I can honestly say is that we do have this divide between east, west, north, and south, and I think that, you know, Sam makes a very good point when he, when he talks about a city of one. One of the things that I look at actually doing to enhance what we do as a city is creating what is called a civic impact team, and that is taking people from all areas within our city to have good ideas, to work with city staff, and actually come up with common sense solutions. One of the other things that I look to do is actually support putting a substation on the east side for law enforcement. One of the things that we just talked about is traffic and getting people to and from places so that we're able to respond in a timely manner in crisis situations. I think the other last portion of that is working with the businesses in the area to ensure that they feel safe, that we are mitigating things like homelessness, because that is, that plays a very, very difficult role with them and the places that they have, because you don't necessarily see those things on the west side of town. And I, Tom? Ladies?
No.
No? She's giving me the sign. The last portion of that is to continue to just engage with the community as a whole and to actually figure out what they want the east side to become.
John Duran.
Let me start out by saying that the east side is not a blighted area. It's a beautiful neighborhood. If you've walked up and down Poncetia Drive or Greenacre or Fuller, they're beautiful neighborhoods, and the homes on the east side are just as valuable as the homes on the west side. I think one of the things we need to look at, and the reason that Mayor Prang and I set up an east side task force, are the demographic changes going on on the east side. The Russian-speaking community has actually decreased from about a third of the city to only about 18% of the city, and over the next 10 years, that number will continue to decrease. A whole lot of young singles are moving into the east side, single working women, single working men, and the demographics of the east side are changing, and that's why I think we need to get ahead of the ball and look at what do we want to create there? An artist colony? Do we want to create sort of live-work spaces on the east side? We have a lot of opportunities to look at the east side in a strategic way, but let's get off this notion that the east side is a blighted area. It's not. It's beautiful.
Thank you. Tom DeMille.
You know, I just, I have to disagree with that statement, because, you know, I've walked all through the east side and in 150 businesses, and all the business owners say the same thing, sidewalks are dirty, the crime, the streets are filthy, the lighting is out, 17 streetlights are out on one night that I counted. We need capital improvements all through the east side, through Spalding Square and through Croissant and Sarabena. All these, all these sidewalks are all broken. This is where all our seniors live, and they didn't want to put cameras in Plummer Park, where the two shootings were, and there's needles all over the park where the kids play, there are needles, and they didn't want to put up cameras. You know, all of this, all of this can really be taken care of if we put up cameras on Santa Monica and Sunset to protect our residents, that we care about them, we can show them that we care about their lives, that they're going to be run over or hit and run in the street, or strong-arm robbery at 3:00 in the morning or 4:00 in the morning. It's unacceptable in our city, and we should take a stand to say that no person gets hurt in our city.
Thank you.
No person gets robbed in our city.
Thank you.
No person gets run over.
Thank you. Rusty Wiggs.
Well, I was just on the east side this week, walking around, handing out my flyers, and I think you have to incorporate the east side residents into these conversations, because they have a lot that they're talking about in their neighborhood. Development is happening on the east side. If you look at La Brea, there's two complexes going up. Movie Town Plaza is going to happen there, and those residents are worried. They can't get out of their street now, they can't make a left-hand turn to get, get onto the streets when they need to. So when we talk about the redevelopment of the east side, I think we have to keep these concerns of the residents, and how are they going to drive around the city when they can't even get out of their neighborhood easily? How are we looking at their mobility of moving around? And there is development there, and I would, I would agree, and it was a very nice part of the city that I was walking around in, and people are taking pride in their property over there. So it is a great pride of the city of West Hollywood.
Thank you. Nick Garzilli.
Yeah, I'm a little bit worried about the east side. I see all the developments coming up, and yeah, the traffic's already terrible. Of course, I just don't know what it's going to be like, it just, I don't think it's going to get any better. So my solution is the WeHo PRT, where you'll be able to get from one, from basically the Fountain and La Brea corner to the library in about three minutes. And I think WeHo residents should write it for less. And again, this can all, we can, we can connect the east and the west of WeHo.
And again, this can all, we, I can, we can connect the east and the west of WeHo. I mean, it doesn't seem fair, all the people on the East Side can't use a beautiful library that opens at 11:00. But, you know, again, technology is the only thing that's going to fix this, innovation. And I'm going to, I got 15 seconds, I'm going to rip into Metro for a second. Metro wants to build a bus depot on Santa Monica so they can make sure buses are running in LA for the next, what, couple hundred years? Buses are part of the problem. They cause traffic.
Thank you. Tristan Schucraft.
Yes. With the East Side, I think, I'd like to think that West Hollywood is the same on both ends, but there is a drastic difference, and I see a lot of improvement with five new projects going up, and that's great. There is the issue of traffic, and I think it comes back to my, my original statement that we need more community involvement. I don't see that happening, we're not reaching out to the, to the community and the residents. And as I walk the, the streets of, of West Hollywood, all of West Hollywood, I think some of the best ideas come from the residents, because they're living in those neighborhoods. I also think public safety should be a, a big priority in that part of the city as well, and I'm very much in support of more mixed-use smart planning there, where you have apartments and businesses underground, because at the end of the day, the best way to eliminate traffic is eliminating the need for your car. I don't personally have a car. I live, where I live at Hancock Lofts, I can walk everywhere I need to go, and if we can do that in more parts of the city, we can really alleviate our need for cars and parking.
Thank you. All right, question number four, one minute. Development agreements. Development agreements, which may circumvent current zoning laws such as allowing billboards, were not allowed. Cannot be appealed except through the courts. They have also been increasingly utilized by council over the past decade. When is the proper circumstance to use a development agreement instead of following the normal approval process? I'd like to start with Steve Martin.
Twice. You know, development agreements have really become a bane, and I know this is a real esoteric issue, but this is basically, this community struggled for four years to come up with a, with a general plan, and even though there's not a lot of consensus on whether the general plan was a good thing, and I personally think it provided for way too much development, but developers can get beyond the general plan by entering into development agreements with the city where they make some, they make some offer to the city to give us some quote-unquote "benefit," but they can get around a lot of different things in the general plan, and it basically is an invitation for corruption, because basically developers are buying their way around the general plan. There's no accountability, these decisions are made behind closed doors, these are negotiated behind closed doors, it totally emasculates the planning commission, and it really leaves the residents with a choice that we have to sue our city. I'll tell you, we only did one or two development agreements when I was on city council. One was with the PDC, one was with the Sunset, Sunset Millennium Project that were major, and now everyone's getting them.
Thank you. Sam Borelli.
I think it first starts with the developers who are running the city and putting the dollars into it to create gridlock, and create problems, and create challenges in our neighborhoods. And when city council members are voting for large developments like the Centrum Project that do not work in our neighborhoods and do not work for the neighbors, it doesn't make sense. When the development that just popped up, we all heard about it this week, at Santa Monica and San Vicente Boulevard, are we really all thinking that nobody at City Hall knew that this was coming? Are we really all thinking that Mr. Aravelo didn't hear a little bit about this proposal at Santa Monica and San Vicente Boulevard, and it just so happens that people were floating ideas in the past 12 months? The problem is, the developers are running the city, and they're contributing to campaigns, and they're getting away with what they can. I will work to make sure that the neighbors are heard first before we overdevelop the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Prang.
The, the concept of development agreements was brought forward to ensure that the public in West Hollywood received some benefit for, for the tremendous impacts that come with development and with outdoor signage. Outdoor signage such as on Sunset may generate $50,000 a month for a sign company, the city may generate $1,000 a year in a business license fee. The development agreement was created to help the city get some public benefit for these developments, for signs which had an impact on the community. That said, there was, there was merit to why this was created. I'm not convinced that this is the way that we go, and I think we need to tighten up development agreements, because I do, do agree with some of the sentiment that's been, that's been expressed. It does give developers the opportunity, and actually sometimes the incentive, to try to get something that we otherwise would not have allowed. We've applied them relatively sparingly, but I think in this, if, if reelected, I will work to try to restrain the use of development agreements, except where necessary public benefit is required.
Thank you. Nick Garzilli.
Yeah. You know, with the developers, I've been having a hard time getting the, the city council to listen to me on the, on the PRT. Maybe I should go to the developers, because I could certainly help them out, because, you know, I was down at Gensler, I had a meeting down there, we were talking about, talking about these technologies, and you know, they build LA Live in Farmers Field, and it's amazing how you can empty a stadium with this technology, and it also changes the fact that you don't need parking ramps, because people don't need cars anymore. You're not going to solve LA's traffic problem until, until you don't need a, until you can live in LA without a car. As far as the, the development behind closed doors, you know, I, I think some, you know, when you get some public use out of it, like the mayor was saying, and I have to, I think my big thing is the billboards. Some of these billboards are heinous. They're disgusting, and right during the Newton shooting, we had this huge black ops advertisement up there, and I, I just, and some of the horror movie stuff, I have a young son, and it, I just, sometimes I want to cover his eyes.
Thank you.
So, anyway.
Tristan Schucraft.
I think if we're, we're doing workarounds to the benefit of the public, then we should have no problem involving the public and getting their feedback. I too believe that the current proposal, which is right across the street from where I live, is, is a massive project at, you know, 10.9 acres, and that nobody at City Hall knew about it is kind of surprising, especially in the city council. But yeah, I, it comes back to accountability, and I, I think that we need to involve the community and get their feedback, and if there are benefits, then the city council should have no problem involving the community and getting their feedback.
Okay, thank you. Christopher Landavazo.
I think it's become very, very clear, when you look at the nine candidates that are sitting before you, and you're hearing a lot about change, and a lot of that comes down to choosing leaders that are effectively going to impart your voice on city council. I can honestly say that when it comes to people that are funding these different campaigns, people like Steve Afriat, who are running two people's campaigns right beside me, and they're actually actively going after each one of our support bases, because we're actually saying that we want to listen to the community. I believe it's absolutely imperative that, that we take back our community as a whole, and that we elect leaders that are going to listen. The public benefit portion of this that we keep talking about is, in, in that general plan, it, it talks about giving up certain things, and you know, Mayor Prang hits on it a little bit, but essentially, you have people that are willing and dealing away things that are not necessarily providing a benefit for the whole. And so this, you have an opportunity to make a change, you also have an opportunity to pick leaders that are going to listen to the community first.
Thank you. Rusty Wiggs.
I think we have an issue with the community feeling that they're not being heard, and this is one of the issues, I think, that states that the community is not being heard. Development is happening, the community wants to be involved. So working your way around the community to make things happen, it's happening, but we need a strong community, we need the residents involved, so we could feel like we're part of the process, and that we're not just being thrown away in the process. When you look at San Vicente and Santa Monica, that big project, I mean, that's major density for our city. That's not just some complex going in and creating just a little bit of traffic or whatever. Those are three major buildings with all that ground floor for retail and everything else, and the community needs to be involved in that process. It's not our city council members that know everything for us.
Thank you. Tom DeMille.
I'd like to think that the city residents have a chance, but you don't. Not with the prostitution of the, of the campaign donations that the developers have given these candidates for years. Some of these candidates, over their lifetime, have raised upwards of a million, a million dollars, and, and this is for a job that pays $100 a week, I never figured that out. But the residents are never going to win. They're never going to win. I, I've, I've been at 15 years of city council meetings where we've never won one single issue, not once, not once, because of the developers' money. Until you get them out, until you ban money from developers altogether, city council shouldn't be taking money from developers, period. They should ban it and really mean it if they, unless they really want to sell. I, I just, I, I can't understand why the, the mayor or John Duran would raise all this money. I just, I, I just, it just, I just, I, it's mind-boggling to me, and, and, and you rest on your laurels like that, and, and the residents never win. The residents never win. Well, you're going to win on March 5th.
Thank you. John Duran.
Thank you. First of all, development agreements are rarely used, and they have to construe a public benefit, much like the La Brea Gateway provided a great deal of public benefit by taking a blighted entryway into the city and creating something that's fantastic, that's actually doubled the property values on the East Side. People are now talking about Santa Monica and San Vicente, which really isn't a development agreement, but since it's been raised, I may as well respond to it. For the last 12 years, you know, that I've been on council, we've been talking about that particular parcel of land. It's a very complex piece of land, because it's owned by the MTA, by the sheriffs, and the city owns the street front. We control the zoning. So currently, the, the MTA owns the parcel, and the MTA has said historically, for at least the 12, past 12 years, we don't want to do anything other than a bus depot, that's all we want there. What we would like as a city is for the south side of Santa Monica to look like the north side, with streets and cafes and coffee houses, much like the other side of the street. But that area is zoned for public purposes. In my mind, it's a great place for a community theater, for many of our performing arts in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Public Plaza, very different than what's being proposed.
Okay. Question five, it's 45 seconds, and it's on public safety. There is a perception that the residential neighborhoods are not safe. Many residents feel that the commercial districts receive the lion's share of sheriff's patrols at the expense of the residential neighborhoods. What is your perception, and would you do anything differently? I'd like to start with Rusty Wiggs.
Public safety is a big concern for me. I live in a neighborhood where robberies do happen, car windows are broken on a regular basis, and I'm scared some nights when I hear something downstairs because of all the robberies. And I think we can take a stand on these issues. I mean, do we need patrol cars parked in our neighborhood to stop some of these robberies? Do we need a night patrol? I mean, some of these things are happening at 4:00 in the morning, even for a community watch group, no one's up at 4:00 in the morning to be watching other, other people's homes. So there's, needs to be a system that we can implement our neighborhoods being protected and watched at night.
Thank you. Nick Garzilli.
Yeah, public safety, again, I'm going to talk about the WeHo PRT. They're, they're going to be illuminated, there's going to be LED lighting underneath the, underneath the, the rails. Great to put bike paths underneath, also those emergency call buttons that you see in colleges, so say if you were attacked and you can run to the emergency button, press that, you'll have a safe area underneath the rails. Also, I know this might be, might not be very popular over here, but how about a group that, concealed carry group, maybe popping up in WeHo? That, that could, that could discourage crime, similar to the carjacking in Texas about 10 years ago. Concealed, concealed carry guy, stop that, and you saw carjackings plummet. So I do want you to remember you have your Second Amendment right.
Tristan Schucraft.
Well, I, I live in West Hollywood West by the commercial district where all the nightlife is, and it is, I feel very safe there. But that's because when somebody gets pulled over for a traffic ticket, there's nine cops that respond to it. I think that our, we have a lot of officers, and they're probably great, but they need to be reallocated throughout the city, and I'd like to see more bike cops. I, I think officers on foot would not be a, a bad idea either, but we certainly don't need eight people responding to a traffic incident like we do now, and when we do create officers on bikes, all three of them don't need to bike down Santa Monica Boulevard together. So I have a good vantage point where I live, and I see this day in and day out.
Thank you. Steve Martin.
We definitely need more law enforcement it, within the neighborhoods. You know, Mayor Prang just said that the city added $1 million to law enforcement, public safety budget this year, which they did do, and, and I agree with him, it's not enough. But I also want to point out to you that during the budget process where that $1 million was allocated, $100,000 was provided, new money to the arts, a $200,000 position was created for special events manager, $80,000 for rainbow crosswalks, and we're still spending $900,000 for Halloween. If law enforcement's an issue, you wouldn't know it going to a city council meeting. We need public safety, we need to start doing zero-based budgeting, so we figure out what we need and pay for it first, and then pay for our special programs, our art programs, and our extras after we've provided public safety.
Thank you, Steve. Sam Borelli.
Well, I first want to go back to the last question and how Mr. Duran answered it, and maybe he imagined how he'd like to see Santa Monica and San Vicente Boulevard, but has he ever asked anybody else in the community what they would like to see at Santa Monica and San Vicente Boulevard? Public safety is in my wheelhouse. I'm a nine-year public safety commissioner, and I've been at almost every neighborhood watch meeting in the last nine years. I also worked with our neighborhood watch, full-time neighborhood watch coordinator. But we need to be more proactive with our neighborhood watch, not reactive in neighborhood watch. We have to give more information to the neighborhood watch captains so that they can get the right information out to the community, and not just wait for something to happen before we react. Thank you. As a city, we can do better.
Thank you. Jeff Prang.
Well, my perception of the public safety in West Hollywood is not that it's an unsafe place. I know the numbers. I get them monthly. West Hollywood is incredibly safe community. We have a great sheriff's department to keep the city safe. It has been one of my highest priorities as a member of the city council. I've been fighting for years to get additional investment in our public safety. We did that this year. Our spending per capita on law enforcement is one of the highest in the county. We have some types of crimes, mostly crimes of opportunity, because we are a tourist destination, but if you're, if you're living in your neighborhoods, you're going to be safe. I'm very proud to say that in November and December, we had zero Part I crimes in the precincts on the East Side. My commitment to public safety is solid, that's why I've been endorsed by the Association for Los Angeles Deputy Sheriffs, as well as our county firefighters.
Thank you. Christopher Landavazo.
Well, I'm glad that the mayor thinks that we do a good job. As a deputy sheriff who's actually served in our community, I can honestly say, thank you, I can honestly say that keeping our community safe is our, is our main priority, and the men and women that I serve with each and every day take great pride in, in the city of West Hollywood. There are a few things, though, that I think that we can do better, and when we talk about, you know, looking at how we deploy our units, it's actually, it's developing beats. Currently, right now, deputies can kind of drift wherever we want to go, and we typically go to places that are a little bit more high target areas for crimes, such as prostitution, drugs, et cetera. But one of the things that we can do better is actually going out and doing more community-oriented policing, and that means getting out of the car, talking to our business owners, going out and engaging our communities and our neighbors, and actually driving through the backstreets to ensure that they know that we have a presence here. I also think that crime bikes is one of the things that we should implement in our city to ensure that we have people who can respond in a very timely manner.
Thank you. John Duran.
Thank you. There is no distinction between commercial and residential areas in the city of West Hollywood. Everybody lives within 500 feet of a commercial district. That's what happens when you live in a city that is highly dense, where everybody is near either Beverly, Melrose, Santa Monica, or Sunset. Secondly, I just want to point out that we have increased the bike and foot patrols, and I do agree with Mr. Landavazo that we do need to get our deputies out of their cars and out into the street in a community-based basis. If you would like to compare, compare us to the LAPD, where a response time for a citizen could be 15 to 20 minutes to never. Our sheriff's department is there usually within one to two minutes. They're always on the beat, they're there, they're highly responsive. We, we know that the people living on Croft and Alfred have begged the city of West Hollywood forever to annex them, because their closest police station is on Wilcox.
Okay, thank you. Tom DeMille. Tom DeMille.
You know, the public safety in the streets, in our neighborhoods, is not very good because of the lighting. I think that if we took all of those blue lights that are on Santa Monica Boulevard and put them in our neighborhoods, we'd get a start. And, you know, the taxes, the prices of these homes need to be going up, not down. And the reason why they're going down is because we haven't invested in infrastructure, in the sidewalks, in the lighting. And if it's unsafe, and there's holes in the ground, and, you know, I run into the police all the time, and the deputies tell me, you know, "We had twenty bikes, Tom, but we only have two bikes now." I would increase that to forty bikes. I would make bikes everywhere, and it would encourage other people to use their bikes also. And, you know, the best part of living in West Hollywood is knowing everybody. That's our safest thing to do, is to know each other.
Thank you. Question six is one minute. Planning Commission. Planning Commission increasingly makes only a recommendation on projects rather than a binding approval or denial. As a result, the affected parties cannot appeal a planning commission recommendation to city council, eliminating due process. Would you do anything to change this, and if so, what? I'd like to start with Nick Garzilli.
You know, I would think that the most amount of transparency is the best. It seems as though nowadays that the government has the privacy, and we don't have any. So again, on the planning commission, exactly how it works, I'd have to get in there and really look, you know, understand what would be the best use of the planning commission. I did go to a planning commission meeting, and there is, there seems to be a lack of dialogue maybe between City Hall and the commission. So, you know, I think that the best thing that we can do is to leave it up to the planning commission, have them make some decisions, and, you know, if, anyway, pass that on to the next person.
Thank you. Tom DeMille.
You know, our planning commissioners, John Alschulz is a very nice guy, Don DeLucio is a very nice guy. Don DeLucio has been on the Democratic nomination team. There's been about eight people. It's been that way for the last twelve years. Eight people run this whole town, and they're on the planning commission meeting, and they're appointed to these positions, and we'll never get a real fair shake if, there's just too much collusion going on. And I think that you have to look at all of us, and you have to say, "Well, who's gonna work with John Heilman and Abby Land and John D'Amico? Who's gonna work good with these people?" I respect John Heilman and Abby Land very much, as do John D'Amico. And I just think that we just need a new, fresh start. And I'm someone that doesn't have any developers' money. I'm running on my disability money. That's what I'm running. Maybe you've seen my signs in every business across the town. I'm trying to increase business by fifteen percent during the month of February. I'm doing that. I'm doing my job already.
Thank you. John Duran.
The way the question is phrased is actually not correct. The planning commission does review the majority of all applications. We only get things that get appealed to us. The planning commission exerts a great amount of influence and power, and that's why it's important that whoever we select, that they know what they're doing there. People often say, "Well, how did you approve that condo project on my block?" And I usually say, "What condo project?" Because unless it gets appealed to council, we don't know anything about it. Most decision-making on land use is made at the planning commission. It's rare when things get appealed up to the council, but when they do, then we take a look at it, and we often uphold the planning commission, maybe modify, but rarely overturn them.
Okay, thank you. Christopher Landavazo.
In speaking to some of the planning commissioners, it's come to my attention that there is some frustration with council, and that is simply that sometimes they feel that they get thrown underneath the bus when council doesn't necessarily want to make the tough decisions. And one of the things that I can honestly say is that what we're looking for in West Hollywood is more transparency. And so for me, it's about the people that I choose, the people that are going to advise me on things such as land use and my planning commissioner. And I could care less whether or not you've given me, you know, tons of money for my campaign or you didn't give me a red cent. If you're the right person for the job, the transparency that I look to bring is by having an open process where people will apply to be my commissioners. They're not gonna be appointed based upon how many votes they got me or how much they donated to my campaign. But I will choose the very best people to represent you, and they will have an open-door policy like I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Prang.
Well, first, I want to commend my appointee, Donald DeLucio, who's been one of the strongest friends of the neighborhood the planning commission has ever had. But this is a very specific issue, and that is, the planning commission did make recommendations to council on a couple of very isolated cases. That's not the way it normally works. I did not approve of that approach. I had a conversation, multiple conversations, with the city manager and the community development director. That community development director, who's the one who recommended that course of action, is no longer the community development director, and I suspect that that strategy will not occur again.
Thank you. Sam Borelli.
The first thing I would do when I assume office is to appoint a planning commissioner who is not beholden to developers and who is actually focused on the job and know how the city and land use works. The second thing that's important with the planning commission, and we have former planning commissioners who are now council members, who fell pressured into voting for something that they didn't necessarily believe in. That is not how our city should work. So I would make sure that we have a planning commission that, once again, has some weight to do the work that they're supposed to do and does not get overruled by a council who just is looking for developing a pet project.
Thank you. Steve Martin.
This is an esoteric issue, but it ties back to the whole issue of development agreements. As long as there's a development agreement, the planning commission can only make a recommendation. And this is where I disagree with Councilmember Duran. On every major development, not some addition to your garage, but on every major development, there has been a development agreement which has circumvented the process. And frankly, it stinks. And I will move to put a moratorium, rather than just talk about it to the city manager, rather than just talk about it in public, I will move and put the city council on the spot to do a moratorium on planning, on development agreements, so that everybody in the community can have a conversation about how we go about doing this. Because right now, this is corrupt. Thank you for shaking your head yes, Jean.
Thank you.
We need people who are not beholden to developers. And when you've got two council members where the prominent land use consultant, Steve Afriat, is running their campaigns, that is called in bed and basically knocked up. And we really need to change this system.
Thank you. Tristan Schucraft.
Yeah, I would agree with my fellow candidates. I think there's a conflict of interest when the city council members have a majority of their funds contributed by developers, and then the city council are the ones that actually appoint the advisory boards and the planning commissions. So I think with the planning commission, that's their responsibility. I think the process, in some cases, is unclear, and there should be more transparency with the community and more an active role that the community plays in planning commission, not just city council.
Okay, thank you. Rusty Wiggs.
I have respect for our planning commission. They have a very hard job to do, and they make a lot of hard decisions that affect all of us, and they have to listen to us and our anger and our joy. So I do give them credit for doing the hard job for our city that is required of them. One of the biggest things for our planning commission is giving them the right tools for these developments. If we need overlay zones for development, if we're looking at our commercial property and we're coming up with a plan that is gonna build for our future, that is gonna build our infrastructure, we need to give the planning commissions those tools to use and work with. So I respect our planning commission. They do a very hard job, and I have a lot of respect for them.
Thank you. Okay, question seven is one minute. Housing stock. West Hollywood has an aging housing stock. How would you work to maintain existing housing and/or encourage new construction, either low-income or market rate? I'd like to start with John Duran.
I already identified that as my number-one priority earlier on in the debate. It is a big issue for our community. Most people don't realize that we have a state mandate called RENA, Regional Housing Needs Assessment, that every city must build both market-rate housing and affordable housing. City of West Hollywood actually does a great job. We set aside twenty percent of any new housing for low-income people, including people with disabilities, HIV, and senior citizens. What the problem is, is that historically, developers were tearing up residential neighborhoods. That's why Mayor Prang and I introduced an interim zoning ordinance, which stopped the demolition in the residential neighborhoods back in 2008 and shifted through the general plan, new development occurring on the major corridors. We have met our RENA numbers at this point. In the upcoming eight-year period that we've just been assigned, we've already met our RENA numbers, so it gives us an opportunity to instead focus on existing housing and repairing the infrastructure that I identified early on in my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Landavazo.
One of the things that I think that we need to do is actually revisit our actual ordinance, and that is to increase the in-lu housing fees. Currently, right now, we give entitlements to developers that come in and essentially allow them to make us promises that they're going to build affordable housing. I think that we need to move to have those be built concurrently with the projects that are currently going on. I think also that we have to be creative with our land use strategies, and also just create more economic incentives that not only look at places that are building twenty or more units, but the places that are building six to eight units, that they will also include affordable housing in the stock that we have.
Thank you. Jeff Prang.
Thank you. I think my record on the issue of affordable housing is pretty clear. I have fought strenuously to protect affordable housing in our neighborhoods. In the time I've been in the council, we have built three-hundred-and-fifty affordable units for seniors, people living with HIV/AIDS, and for the disabled. I co-authored, along with John Duran, the moratorium that stopped the demolition of affordable, rent-controlled apartments for the creation of large, unaffordable condominiums. I authored the Historic Resources Survey to make sure that we have an opportunity to protect those historic buildings in West Hollywood and preserve them for the future. I have fought against the demolition of rent-controlled apartments to construct huge four-story buildings every chance I've gotten, and I think my record has been pretty clear on that. I voted against the general plan because I think it allowed too much development. If I am re-elected, I pledge to continue along those lines and to invest more effort into attempting to protect our rent-controlled workforce housing.
Thank you. Sam Borelli.
As far as existing housing stock, I do think that we have some challenges. Sometime last year, Councilmember D'Amico actually came up with a good opportunity to help some of our landlords and our housing that are having some crises, and he didn't get any votes, and anybody on our current council to help him with that. He would get my vote to help him with some of that opportunity. As far as inspiring new opportunities, I am absolutely for affordable housing for our seniors and people living with HIV and AIDS and disabled. But we have gentrified West Hollywood, my friends. We are not inspiring young people, and we have priced out young people from living here. And what I will do when I take office is make sure that we have opportunities like micro-units, which they are doing in other progressive, creative cities like West Hollywood is supposed to be, and make sure that micro-units, so a twenty-two-year-old who's just out of college and can only afford eight-hundred dollars, has an opportunity to live in West Hollywood, and maybe two doors down there with a seventy-two-year-old, and thus, we're inspiring and engaging intergenerational interaction.
Okay, thank you.
We can do better.
Steve Martin.
I've been a huge advocate for protecting our stock of affordable housing because rent-controlled housing is being demolished faster than we can create affordable housing for people. We are destroying our neighborhoods. We are displacing the people that make West Hollywood great and creative. Working people, young people, seniors, people who don't have cushy government jobs or aren't making six figures. The goal of the city seems to be to create a whole community of luxury condos and a few pockets of affordable housing. The biggest problem we have is that we, you know, the interim ordinance that stopped, that put a moratorium on demolition, happened at the height of the recession, when there was no demolition happening anyway. Nothing has happened since to put the brakes on the demolition of rent-controlled housing, and we're seeing it again. We need to make it much more difficult to demolish rent-controlled housing. We need to work to keep that rent-controlled housing in the market. And frankly, during the general plan process, nobody on city council, other than John D'Amico, talked about this issue, and it's a disgrace.
Thank you. Tristan Schucraft.
Yeah, when I first moved here a few years ago, looking for apartments, a lot of the apartments, as John Duran pointed out, do need repair. And I think there's very little incentive right now for land, property owners to improve their properties. So I'd like to work with and create some creative incentives for landlords to improve their properties. I love the idea of micro-units. They're doing it in San Francisco, and again, it keeps the diversity of the city, because one of the reasons I love living here is because all my friends live here. And so I think that's really important. And I do like the current approach, that if there is any new development, that it does include a certain percentage for low-income housing. It's in my building, and I think it works really well.
All right, thank you. Nick Garzilli.
Yeah, the micro-units, I'm against those. That's very much in the UN Agenda 21 playbook, and I just don't think it's, I just don't think, I can't imagine living in a 200-square-foot apartment. Please. I mean, anyway, the WeHo PRT, I think, can solve a lot of these problems. It's gonna be a new source of revenue. No, no, honestly, it's gonna be a new source of revenue. It's gonna be a huge source of revenue for the city, and we can then put that towards, you know, subsidizing the rent even more so than we do now. And I do think there needs to be some process to get people out of decrepit apartments and just fix it up in one or two days and let them come back in. There has to be some way, some incentive, some win-win for the building owner and for the resident to keep these things rent-controlled and having people live in apartments that are at least 600 square feet? But yeah, micro-units, not a good idea. Not a good idea.
Thank you. Rusty Wiggs.
Going out and looking at some of these rent-controlled apartments, some of them are falling apart, and I think rent control can be a double-edged sword in letting buildings falter, so they have to be redeveloped. And I think there's a certain, a different way we could look at this. I mean, do we need to require landlords to pass on a maintenance fee to the renter so they still get rent control, but there's a maintenance fee to maintain these buildings? And what I'm hearing from people on rent control is that they need help from the city to make this happen. It's not that a landlord is just gonna come in and do all this stuff for them. They need help from the city to make sure that the balance of the landlord and the renter is balancing out for the prosperity of the property.
Thank you. Tom DeMille.
Well, the city really hasn't done anything with infrastructure for our neighborhoods, so, you know, they've become blighted, and the landlords have just gone along with it. They said, "Well, you know, the city's not doing anything for us. Why should we do anything for our homes?" And, you know, we need to give tax incentives to the homeowners in West Hollywood. Tax cuts? I mean, we're Democrats. Why can't we have tax cuts? It's crazy. I mean, some of these guys talk like Republicans. They built this library next door like they're Republicans, but, you know, really, you know, what happened to taking care of people? What happened about taking care of, you know? You know, I live in a place where the Actors Fund of America home, and I'm proud to live there, but we've lost twenty-six people since I moved in. I was a dedication speaker, and Mr. Prang has never been to my house in fourteen years, so he's full of shit.
All right, thank you. Okay, question eight, one minute. Infrastructure. Do you feel that the city's current infrastructure, such as sewage, water, electricity, and gas, is adequate to meet the needs of both current demand and projected growth? If not, how would you address this issue? I'd like to start with Christopher Landavazo.
Let's start with the unsexy portion of this, which is trash. Unfortunately, what we kind of tend to do is we wait till the last minute until we start to really focus on things that are gonna have a huge impact on us. And currently, the landfill that the city uses is going to be closed in one year, which means that we are gonna have to really start looking at how much it's gonna cost, not only to the residents, but also to our businesses. As a person who actually went out and toured Athens and looked at how we collect trash and such, I thought that we can actually become a greener city by actually utilizing one trash can as opposed to separating things in and out. I think that we have to be proactive in our approaches to making sure that we're not in crisis situations where we're under the gun to make decisions that are gonna have a fiscal impact on taxpayers here in the city, and that includes sewage, water, gas, et cetera.
Thank you. Jeff Prang.
Yes, I do believe that we have, that those, that infrastructure is sustainable in the city of West Hollywood. We've invested significantly in our sewers. We don't control the gas, that's the gas company, but we've invested significantly in our infrastructure, including in our roads and municipal facilities. I always like to tell people, "You know you're entering West Hollywood because that's when the potholes stop," or, "You know, when you're leaving, when the potholes start." But this city has, if we've done anything well in the city of West Hollywood, that is investing in municipal infrastructure to ensure that it's sustainable and will last for decades to come.
Thank you. Sam Borelli.
I would agree. I think the city's done a fairly adequate job in our infrastructure. I think the city's done a fairly adequate job in our infrastructure. I am concerned about water and gas and sewage, and certainly about lighting. When my friends in the Plummer Park East Side area are complaining, week after week after week, council meeting after council meeting, that there's lights out continuously, five or six lights in, on the east side and in and around Plummer Park, that is a problem. And we haven't done anything to work with creative solutions like solar panels, solar lighting. We can do better as a city with infrastructure. And certainly, the trash situation is getting better, but I found out that we can consolidate some of our services with our Athens, which has been a fantastic partner for the city, to save the city money and to save the staff from being bogged down dealing with three different contractors rather than one. And I think part of infrastructure is creativity. We have lost our way as a creative city. Look at one of our bike racks. Not creative.
Great, thank you. Steve Martin.
Part of the problem we have is that our general plan really calls for more growth than we can sustain. You know, we've done a great job, okay, on sewers. I was the leader on taking Santa Monica Boulevard over from Caltrans and the redesign of that, and we put in some great sewers and storm flood control, but that's not enough. We've got aging electrical, and we keep on trying to squeeze more and more people into our 1.9 square miles. Frankly, we're almost a fully-built-out city. We can't afford to add another 15%, 20% increase in our population, what our general plan calls for. It just doesn't make any sense. We definitely need to require new development to all have solar panels, and we just need to look at our infrastructure investments. I mean, it's ridiculous to have a $65 million library that we can't afford to keep open on Sunday. So sometimes we have to use a little balance and a little common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Tristan Schucraft.
Yeah, as far as infrastructure, I think the city has handled it well, and I think going forward with new development, it needs to continue to take it into consideration. The only thing I see on the streets is the trash cans do fill up, and they maybe could be emptied quicker, but things about the lights, we hear about this all the time at city council meetings, I don't think that city residents need to come to city council meetings to report a light being out, nor do they need to mention it more than once, and follow up with the city council to see what the status is. I think that we can leverage technology to create phone apps where people can report an issue, whether it's a broken curb or a street out, light outage, and create a service ticket. And with that service ticket, they get an update of when it's going to be fixed and when it is fixed. They don't need to continuously participate in city council meetings, and if we do that, we'll continue to engage the community and encourage them to report more shortcomings that need to be addressed. But overall, I think infrastructure is pretty good in the city of West Hollywood, and I agree, you can tell as soon as you cross over to West Hollywood--
Thank you.
--streets are better.
Nick Garzilli.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to take the mayor's word. I think, you know, I think the sewers and everything, I think we're pretty good on the infrastructure. Of course, I want to build the WeHoPRT. And solar panels on top. On hot days, this is going to supply a lot of energy right back into the grid. So again, getting rid of all those emissions, getting rid of all the pollution, and, you know, and it's solar-powered transportation. You know, I'm trying to change the lifeblood of our economy from oil to ingenuity. We need a free market in transportation. In 1984, MCI sued the federal government and won, and that's why we have cell phones, that's why we have iPhones. So the same thing needs to happen to transportation. We need to automate transportation, and we need to stop moving tons to move a person. When we do that, these pods use a tenth the energy of a car, and they can be powered by the sun. So again, let's just, and free energy device, there's suppressed energy technology, and if maybe the council starts speaking up about this, the US government could maybe let some of these be free. But right now, we got a big problem because everything is, the whole economy is debt, war, and oil.
Rusty Wiggs.
The city could do a better job at trying to go green. We live in Southern California. Solar power is a big option for us as a city. We have a house, and we have solar panels on our house. They do work. But I do think we need to look at our energy concerns for the future. When power lines were built, we didn't all have computers, telephones, iPads, gaming devices. And these power lines in my backyard, I mean, are they the infrastructure of the future? I would like the power lines to go somewhere else personally myself. And when it comes to water, I know water is a bigger issue than just the city of West Hollywood, but we do get our water from the city of Beverly Hills, but we are in a place where water demands are a big priority for a major growing city, and I think that's a priority to look at when we look at our consumption in these issues.
Thank you. Tom DeMille.
The question was about trash, and, all right, you know, the city balances the budget on the backs of all you folks. They really do. You know, the regular big businesses that have huge containers full of trash from businesses pay about the same rate as the homeowners. I don't know why the homeowners don't get a break on that. I don't know why they have to pay all those, those heavy fees. And if they weren't paying all these heavy fees and the city wasn't balancing the budget on the backs of these people, then maybe they could fix their houses up. And that's all I have to say right now about that, but, you know, you know, our infrastructure is, like Vista, where we have our historical locations on Vista, it goes under eight inches of water when we have, when we have rainstorms, eight to 10 inches of water. And so there are a lot of places that we need to fix, and the people know where they are. You all know where they are, so I'll be helping to fix all those problems.
Thank you. John Duran.
On the question of infrastructure, yes, we have adequate sewage, water, electricity, and gas. One of the beauties of having the internet is that any of us can Google population. The city of West Hollywood's population has gone down in the last 10 years, not gone up. I know there's a belief that we are going through growth in the city of West Hollywood, but if you type in US Census, West Hollywood, 2000, our population was 36,000. Today, it's 34. So our number has actually gone down. And so the belief out there that we have explosive growth going on, it's just not true. You can look it up yourself if you wish. I think the bigger issue, though, is the issue about electricity. We don't have our own electric company like Los Angeles. We use Edison. And one of the things that's missing are market incentives. 85% of us live in either apartments or condominiums, and a minority of us live in single-family homes. There are no market incentives to provide people the ability to take energy from the sun off of solar panels and sell it back to the grid.
Okay, thank you.
And that's something that has to happen with Edison.
Question nine. Question nine is 30 seconds. It's on budget. City council recently passed a new budget. What line items, if any, would you have voted to increase or decrease? I'd like to start with Jeff Prang.
I would have increased public safety, and I would have decreased special events.
Okay, thank you. Sam Borelli.
Well, certainly, I would, I would want to look at the budget closely and see what is coming into the future. Certainly, some of the entitlements that the current council and city manager special projects take with some of the special events that happen in our city. I certainly was not a fan of Go-Go Dance Appreciation Day, and I don't know many people that were. And putting city resources into funds that are only for a certain segment in our city and not for a general population. I want to represent the entire population of West Hollywood and not just one segment of West Hollywood. So I would look at the budget closely and see what's good for everybody in West Hollywood. Public safety, of course, but just raising the budget on public safety doesn't make sense to me. Do you really want to cop on every corner?
Thank you. Steve Martin.
You know, Mayor Prang had an opportunity to increase the budget for law enforcement and decrease the amount of money for special events, and he didn't do it, and he didn't go to bat for it. Didn't happen. I'll make sure that it does happen. I sat on the Budget Subcommittee for eight years. The entire time I was on City Council, I know that budget. I know what we can do. You know, one of the things, I was talking to people in Plummer Park from the Russian community, and this year, this Halloween, the Children's Pumpkin Patch, the Halloween program for kids in Plummer Park was canceled due to lack of funding.
Thank you.
That's, that's just really embarrassing.
Tristan Schucraft.
Yeah, I agree with, with the public safety being additional funds, it's, I think it's about 23% of the city's budget at this point, and I think right now we need to really reallocate those resources that we're already continuing, paying for at this moment. And I think that anything in the budget needs to be well-diversified among the city so that the west side, the east side, the north, the south, all of the events and community events that they, they want to, the city to fund, gets the same attention.
Right, thank you. Nick Garzilli.
Yeah, I think the number-one thing I would do, you know, I went to the Public Facilities Commission last month to their meeting, and Susan Anderson, the head of the library, was there, and the commissioners were just like, they just don't understand how we built this multimillion-dollar library, but didn't have enough budgeted to properly staff it. I mean, it opens up at 11:00, it's closed on Sundays, it's ridiculous. I mean, the people that I know that like to read, like to drink coffee early in the morning, then read. The library should be open for them. Should be open for all of us a lot longer, and we can hire an extra three, extra three librarians as well, and let's really use this beautiful facility to its best.
Thank you. Okay, Rusty Wiggs.
Talking about the budget, I know we, during the recession, we were a city that did stay in the black. So we are balancing our budget and making an example in that direction. I don't know what I would go and cut in our current budget, but I do think we do need to look more about how do we create more public safety with people being on the ground and not necessarily being sheriffs, and if it's a community effort where you have to get the community involved, I am all for it.
Tom DeMille.
My budget priorities would be people, women's health, our Russian residents. I'd put park rangers in our parks. I'd have tax incentives for our, for our homeowners to fix up their homes. Again, you know, the first time I ran for, for City Council was in 1998, was for the love of my city and for saving my life and receiving a beautiful home, and the budget's doubled since I first ran. And we sure could do a whole lot more. We could sure--
John Duran.
--act like Democrats for a change.
Thank you. John Duran.
Thank you. The city of West Hollywood is in a minority. We are one of 7% of the cities in America that are actually in the black. Unlike neighboring Los Angeles or Beverly Hills, which have had to cut back programs and lay off city employees, the city's not had to do one cutback. If we stop collecting taxes today, we could run the city for 15 months on what we have in prudent reserves. That's why we have a AAA bond rating, because of the decisions we've made fiscally and setting aside monies over the last 10 years. We've now taken that, been able to do significant capital improvements--
Okay, thank you.
--parks and libraries.
Thank you. Christopher Landavazo.
It's interesting that he mentions the arts when, you know, we have the UndeRun and the End of the World coming up, or it just passed. I think that when we look at this, you know, every, every time I show up, I keep hearing the mayor say that we need to stop doing these expenditures and using the city like an ATM. We are in the black. We do have people that have made really good decisions in the past with regards to our budget, but at the same time, I think that we need to be looking at how we're spending those monies each and every time we make these decisions. Go-Go Boy Appreciation Day, End of the World, and the UndeRun are just something, are things that really bring the entire community together, and we need to start focusing on things that enhance the livability for women and children--
Thank you.
--et cetera.
Okay, question nine. 30 seconds. I'm sorry, question 10. 30 seconds, Plummer Park. Describe your vision of the future of Plummer Park. And I'd like to start with Sam Borelli.
30 seconds. Well, first of all, the city needs to pay attention to Plummer Park. And secondly, the city needs to hear from the residents who live around Plummer Park. And third, the city needs to engage the residents who use Plummer Park every day and ask them what they want to see. Dropping a Judson-sized or Judson-based park in the middle of a beautiful, wonderful urban community does not make sense. So the first thing I would do is ask the residents and the people that use the park what they want to see, not what I want to see first.
Thank you. Steve Martin.
I completely agree with Sam Borelli. We've got, we had, the city adopted a plan that was completely disconnect with what the community wanted. About 18 months ago, I was at a community meeting in one of those cramped, standing-room-only meetings in Plummer Park where residents came to confront staff about the problems they had with Plummer Park. At the time, John Duran was there. He was mayor. He shows up, he's there 20 minutes at most, decides he doesn't like what people are saying, and he walks out of the meeting. "I've got another place to go." You know, when we've got a controversial issue, I don't care where you're supposed to be. You need to be listening to the people.
Tristan Schucraft.
Yeah, definitely, community involvement. I've been to Plummer Park. I think it's a nice park. There's definitely areas that could use improvement, but I don't use Plummer Park, and it seems that I don't, I don't believe in spending money fixing something that the residents that use it don't want spent. I think that, again, it's just, it's about what they want, not what the city wants, and we need to engage the community that uses the park much more.
Thank you. Nick Garzilli.
Yeah, definitely, the, the plan for Plummer Park seemed a little bit over the top, and I think we just got to listen, yeah, I'm agreeing with everyone here, you got to listen to the people that live around the park, that use the park the most. And I can tell you that I'd have a WeHoPRT stop on the north and south, south side of it, so everyone can use it in West Hollywood.
Great, thank you. Rusty Wiggs.
I see, Plummer Park is a great community park, and I see it growing more in that direction. Do we need to add a dog park in it somewhere to bring more people in there to feel more comfortable with their dogs? But it's a really great, community-based park, and I see it just keep on growing in that direction.
Thank you. Tom DeMille.
Well, we can start by not cutting down all the trees, because, you know, the first thing that they want to do is cut down all the trees, and, you know, this is, provides oxygen for us with congested streets, and, and you guys voted not to put cameras in Plummer Park two weeks ago, when two people, there've been two shootings there, and like I said, there's needles all over the place. Kids, our children are walking in that park in the morning, and they have to see that crap in the park. And they've done nothing to rehabilitate these buildings.
Thank you, Tom.
They let them go unpainted. They let them go unfixed.
John--
Thank you.
John Duran.
Oh, sorry, John.
Thank you. This is a question that can't be answered in 30 seconds, but I'll do my best. There were over 60 meetings that occurred on Plummer Park, and a lot of people participated in those meetings, and another group of people felt they hadn't been heard, so we put the brakes in to accommodate those opinions. The redevelopment agency, then, of course, the Supreme Court took that away from us. And so we are starting all over again with the public process on Plummer Park, and that's where we are. We're on a clean slate, and we'll go forward with community input.
Thank you. Christopher Landavazo.
I think it's been said a couple times that we need to start listening to our residents more and truly incorporating the things that they want. I know for some of them, I've heard, you know, increased lighting for safety. The cameras in the park are a good idea to ensure that, you know, law enforcement can actually respond and see whether or not we have to deploy units. The dog run, you know, there's a lot of people that are, you know, dog owners here in the city are guardians, as we stated, and, you know, we need to provide places for them to take their four-legged friends so that they can actually be off-leash and not necessarily have to go outside of our city. The last thing is community spaces--
Okay, thank you.
--community meeting spaces.
Jeff Prang.
I love Plummer Park. It's my favorite park, and it's just full of history. But in fairness, the city did a good-faith effort over a number of months to try to develop community consensus on what to do with the park, but not every time we've moved forward with a project do we, do we get it right. Sometimes we miss the mark, and I was persuaded by the public rejection of that plan that we, that we did miss the mark, and I, and I supported the neighbors in making a number of significant modifications. Now that we lost the funding through redevelopment, it's time that we go back to the community, come up with a dignified plan for Plummer Park that everybody can feel comfortable with.
Great. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank all the candidates. Thanks again to the League of Women Voters. Unfortunately, we don't have enough time to take questions from the audience. I'd like to thank all the candidates. Thanks again to the League of Women Voters. Unfortunately, we don't have enough time to take questions from the audience. Just want to remind everyone to pick up their parking validations, and thank you again.